Afternoon, everybody. The appointed hour having arrived and we call to order meeting the salary board. If we could have a roll call of members present, please.
Commissioner Eichlberger.
Present.
Commissioner Foshee.
I'm here.
Commissioner DiColippo.
Present.
Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Okay, thank you all. At this point, we have open floor for public comment for the salary board. Anyone wishing to address an issue of the salary board is he done? So we'll move along. We have the board actions. We need to action on that, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary board actions.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thanks. Okay, and we have the minutes of June 29 requiring action. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Okay. Other business, the couple for the salary board anyway. Okay, there are none. We'll adjourn this meeting and move into the board commissioners meeting. And we open with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will call meeting to order and give a roll call of members present, please.
Commissioner Eichlberger.
Present.
Commissioner Foshee.
I'm here.
And Mr. DiColippo.
Present.
Okay, very good. Okay, at this point, we have the floor open for public comment. Is there anyone who's called in? The public comment, there are none. We will move along and we have... This is employee recognition. Do we have some employees here?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
Just a few.
It's good. We have with us, we are honored to have with us today our stellar crew from the Bureau of Elections. And as a way of saying thank you for the distinctive manner in which they carry out their duties here in this recently held primary election, an unprecedented situation I might add. And we're very proud that everybody really stepped up and made this thing work and made it work well. You know, there's always critics out there, we hear them all the time. But we're very familiar that there was extraordinary effort put forward here. And we wanted to say thank you for your efforts on that. And to make a public acknowledgement, unfortunately, our public acknowledgement has to be with all of us looking like we're robbing a bank. That's beside the point here. So we have a little certificate of recognition for each one. So I'm going to ask you to come up. Can we do this distance wise? You know, or are we equipped with masks? Or maybe we should do a table. Let's do it one at a time. I'm going to call out the name. If you're here, come up. And we're unfortunately not going to shake your hands, all right? So but I'd like to just hand off the certificate of recognition for you. It's going to be a nice little certificate. Hopefully you'll frame it and hang it up as a little reminder of the primary election of the year 2020. So, okay, we're going to stand up here and just... I tell you what, why don't you just come around here as I read them off. Megan Horace.
Oh, Megan.
There she is. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then I'm going to start saying aye.
And we're going to, are we going to do individual ones? Can we do that?
We can do that.
Let's, we can do that. What we, you can stay back here and you stay up there. Can you shoot that now?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, break that, that's fine.
And then we can all... And then this way.
I can do group shots.
I am.
Yeah.
It's kind of a group shot. We're kind of, can you get us a bit?
A little bit in between, so we're not coming up once that way.
Of course. You're a disadvantage here, because you're going to look much bigger than the rest of us.
Yeah, smile in your eyes.
All right, smile. All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Jerome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your effort. Really appreciate it. And we're going to do the photo here too.
I'm going to take a couple.
Very good. Who else we have? Linda, is it? Erin?
Thank you.
Erin, okay. Okay, Alyssa Lopper. Lydia Meyer.
I'll take one.
I'll cover this.
Maury Bysler. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. I got one left here. Hopefully I didn't miss anybody. I got one left here because as much as it's a group effort, you know, it takes a leader to pull it together. And I think your department is extremely lucky. We as commissioners feel extremely fortunate. And Bethany Salzo-Louis, the Director of Bureau Elections. Bethany, I got a little thank you for you as well. Very good.
Can I just say a quick?
Please move on.
Okay. Should I say a aye? Because that's good.
That's good, yeah.
Okay. My staff, other than Megan and Maury and myself, are, sorry, are less than a year old. So what they were able to do and accomplish is an extraordinary feat. And they all know how much I appreciate them, but I appreciate all of you showing appreciation for that because they really deserved it and really worked so, so hard and smiled the whole time. Great attitude, super positive and, you know, it's good because they're new, so I'm going to... They're going to think every lunch after this is like, oh my goodness. This is perfect, this is perfectly it's not. So, no, really, they did an extremely, extremely, and I am very blessed to have all of them. I'm very thankful, so.
Well, we stuck with it through this one and we think we catch it for a while.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe else want to mention anything about the...
Sure, sure. Sure, why don't you do that?
Yep. Okay, very good. Thank you. Why don't we do it all again in the November, right? Great. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. We have item five, which is the minutes of June 25 and June 29. And we need action on that, so I entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, yes, thank you. Item six is the approval of personal transactions.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Right, item seven, we have the 2020, 2021 Human Services Plan. It was discussed at length at the workshop on Thursday. And that requires action today as well. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Or not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 2020, 2021 Human Services Plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, item is the discussion approval of the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant. Worth amount 128,650 dollars. And there's action for that today. Do we have any update or anything? Julian's online, so Julian, I think you're unmuted on this end. If you want to present now, now's your time.
Okay, thank you. As you may recall, in April, we applied for 259,499 dollars. And we're receiving about half of our request, which is pretty good. Us and Community Cares and Safe Harbor are all thrilled and excited that we are receiving these funds. And I just want to take the time to thank you for your assistance with that.
Okay, do we have questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that, what do you accept this through to us?
Yes, I'll make a motion for approval of the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant. Worth amount 128,650 dollars.
And I second that motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, moving along to item nine, we have the grants and contracts. Section 9.1, existing contracts, section 9.2, the new grants and contracts. And unless anyone has further questions or comments on those, we can do them together. Or if you want to separate them out, we can do it that way. I'll entertain a motion.
So I'm going to move to approve the contracts and grants at 9.1 A to C and 9.2 A to G.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further questions? There are none, we call the question. All in favor, if anybody say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 10 is the DDP Local Climate Action Program of 2020, 2021. Also reviewed at the July 9 workshop. I'll entertain a motion in regards to some of that.
Make a motion to approve the DDP Local Climate Action Program 2020, 2021.
And I second that motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, also, we have item 11, the general dispersal transfer authorizations for July 3, July 8, July 10. We're going to list the amounts here, 1,102.26 and 4,106,658.39 for July 3, July 8. It's 2,325,056.59 and 8,521.04 on July 10. For 75,762.46. We have a motion.
I move to approve the general dispersment transfer authorizations.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, if anybody say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, like the acceptance of monthly reports, the record of courts, the recorder of deeds, the register of wills, and the changes of assessment, all for the month of January, no action. Okay, at this point, we've reached the other business. Additional business, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I do have an item I'd like to bring up. Back at the March 11 findings meeting. This board made a motion to authorize recorder of deeds to initiate the collection of a fee of 15 dollars per transaction. This dated within Act 152 of 2016. And this has to be created either by resolution or ordinance subject to solicitor's recommendation. Also, at that same meeting, the board moved to create a resolution to start the process to identify the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority as the administrator of the Land Bank of Cumberland County. Since it's been about four months, I requested, you know, what is going on with these two items. So, Lester Brenman, I think you advised that the ordinance regarding the fee collection was done in mid-April.
Correct, it's a resolution. I did that and I was under the impression that the Redevelopment Authority's solicitor would be preparing the other resolution. That apparently was not the case. I prepared that last week. And I've communicated with the reporter of deeds. And I understand she's in the process of having her solicitor look at what I've prepared. As I just already been approved by the solicitor for the redevelopment for it. And I think it's a matter of her doing some changes to her software to allow the collection of additional fees. I don't know how long it's going to take, but she's working on that now, as I understand it.
Keith, we do have to at a public meeting adopt those resolutions.
You will, that's correct, yeah.
So that could be fun. I'm not saying we do it today, but they are next public meeting.
Certainly, you can do that. I'll check the language again on the resolution on the collection. There may be a lapse of time between when you enact that resolution and when she's actually able to collect the funds from the recorded instruments.
Well, we, we have a fee right now. To me, it would just be a matter of adjusting a number. I don't, I know you can't answer this. I don't see why there should be such a delay in getting this done from the recorder of deeds office. Stacy, do you have any comment on that?
I mean, I'll just say that just having an understanding about how systems, like her system work, that typically it needs to be programmed into her system so that as that money is collected at the end of each month, it provides that number so that the monies can easily be dispersed. So I don't know if it's just as simple as adding in, collecting this additional amount.
Right. I'm not sure either.
The resolution, Keith, would it have an effective date? Should it have an effective date?
It will have an effective date on that. It's either the date of enactment or, I don't recall if I specified a specific date the same as the reading date. I just don't recall.
I would just say as my colleagues, if we could take action on this soon. That's what I had.
I would agree with Commissioner that we are sitting on a fee that needs to be collected to the people of Cumberland County and the Land Bank program. We need to give them a lot of that.
So there's, I mean, that will not, not be in place until it is enacted. So anything transacted between the time of approval or the original time of approval and the final approval is just lost to us.
Correct.
So we, so we're waiting on the other resolution?
No, both resolutions are done. They've been approved by the Redevelopment Board.
And what was the reason for the delay of the original approval of the redevelopment authority for the resolution?
I, I don't know. I can't speak to that. I, I was under the impression that Redevelopment Authority's solicitor would be preparing the one where the authority would act as the agent for planning and for these funds.
That's their roles, okay. So we didn't receive any explanation why it wasn't, oh, it just comes to me.
So I jumped in and did it.
All right, so the, it's the office downstairs that is... All right. Are we, we're not in a position to approve anything now, correct?
I think we could.
Yeah.
Since we haven't seen it recently, I would just suggest we go to our next public meeting. That way we can review it.
Okay.
Just, this is my suggestion.
Are we, are we in need of additional communication with the reporter's office or?
I, I did as latest today.
You did?
I did, I sent both resolutions to her.
Okay.
And she sent the one to her attorney. And I can follow up with her to see what is happening with changing her system to allow for the collection.
Okay, so it's on our agenda for, going to the year, year you assume. Okay, very good.
And we could possibly adopt it or fight it to the board's own truth.
Is that going to be a difficult stage, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what she has to do to be in a position to collect the money.
Yeah. Okay, very good. All right, well, why don't we put it on the agenda for Wednesday? Whether we find anything, any other...
We did press on this week's finance meeting.
Oh. Okay. We just... Is that on our calendar this one? Did we do that in form?
Yeah, the press conference.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, I knew there was something, okay. All right. Well, we have the option of a follow-up workshop. I guess I'll be tempted to be at that for a general. And we can adjust as we can, if necessary. All right? Okay, very good. So...
Yes, that's all right, thank you.
I do not have any other business.
Okay. There's staffing, the business. All right. The... No, at this point, we adjourn the meeting. I do know that we have some visitors. Actually, you missed the public comment portion. I'm sure, you know, you may have had interest in participating in that. We're really under no obligation to go back and revisit that. However, a number of you may have made the effort to come here. So unless my colleagues have checked, I think we could add additional public comment.
I'm in favor of that. I firmly believe that when residents come to meetings, we need to...
Okay. What we'll do here is we will allow public comment. Anyone who wants to speak, you have to, we ask you to identify yourself and where you're from. And we ask you generally to limit your comments to about three minutes. Where you tend to be a little generous with that, as long as it's not abused. And if anyone else who wants to speak can then speak, also identifying themselves. We ask you not to engage in ad hominem repetition. So if there's, if you have new or unique points that you'd like to raise, then feel free to do so. So at this point, who would like to? Mr.?
Ms. Hannah.
Ms. Barryl.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Hudson, CEO of Voices for Voiceless. This is a grassroots organization. We work to combat oppressive and retaliatory based experiences in our community. We also try to build a better community. Currently, with the nature of our adversary and Parryburg and the New Covenant area, with all this going on with the George Floyd case and with the disutility, things that nature, we've been working to recognize our differences in our community and also many relationships with law enforcement. I currently work hand in hand with Mayor Patrick Wilson Harrisburg, also Commissioner Carter. And what we are here today is to discuss some of the issues that also affect the Cumberland County area when it comes to racial injustice and bigotry and things of that nature in the school system as well as the community. A week or so ago, we held a peaceful protest and rally at the park. It was successful. We also had a community festival event at the park. And part of the things we want to discuss is we would like to work with officials to help either fund some of the events in or give us some type of cooperation to help deal with these issues to end the violence, to end the ways that lie between officials, law enforcement and the community. Many of the people who see what they're a part of our organization or members of D4C, which is another grassroots organization, Voices for Change. And why we're here today in attendance is to have a friendly dialogue, a peaceful dialogue in hopes that we can work out some raises that we know for the community to work on these various issues and to be sort of like a mediator within the community to rid the community of any violent outbursts and violence, any chaotic rallies and things of that nature. Because those are the things we are against, we totally rely on unity and collaboration in community efforts.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the name of your organization again?
I'm Voices for the Voices.
Voices for the...
It's a Bible one, D4C, Hot Air.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, sir. My name is Laura Cotton. I'm a resident of cancer. I've actually got four kids that have been or currently going through recovery in the schools of the school district. And I am the CIO of Voices for Voiceless. I just basically wanted to come in today and we saw an opening in the resolution that you guys had signed into affect us with concern with bigotry and racism. Who, like Kevin said, we just wanted to come and reach out and holler brunch to not only county, but its officials as well, to let them know that there are opportunities for a bridge to be made between community and people such as yourself. We are 100% committed to working hand in hand with any facility, any institution, any office that is willing to open the doors and turn us to the table. We are currently working on several initiatives in education as well as in government. Like Kevin said, we have strong connections in Dolphin County and the relation between Dolphin County and the West Shore is vital.
Is what?
Vital, vital.
Vital, oh, vital, no, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You're listening.
But being an African American male that lives on the West Shore and having biracial children that live on the West Shore, it's oftentimes a strategic life in that how we are at home isn't necessarily how we're able to be moving to our homes. And I think that it's about time that everybody live their, have the ability to live their life openly and not have to live in a strategic way. I think that that's, that in itself will squelch a lot of visions that have its own. We all feel on a day to day basis, whether it's politics, now it's color. Three months ago was sexual orientation.
With you wearing a mask.
Correct, correct, correct. And these little mighty things in life have become daily struggles in each and every one of us. We know somebody that's either no masker or has been through a struggle in their LGBTQ A-plus journey or comes in contact with some other sort of discrimination or racism. And the way that Cumberland County is growing, I believe that it is of pertinent importance that people such as yourself need to charge in having open arms and welcoming everybody that comes to Cumberland County that you know what Cumberland County has to offer. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, I, I'm Jeanne Foshee. I hope I spoke with you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's very nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you as well.
We could hold up just...
All right.
Do you mind if I can be on my... I'm sorry. Do you mind if I can be on my... That's fine. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wilson. I am the CEO of Voices for Voiceless. And I live in the Cumberland County area. I have interracial children, two of them who attend the schools here. And it's been an issue, ongoing issue with my son. I mean, he's 16 years old. And he's been stopped and harassed by the police officers since he was a kid playing outside baseball. And cops drive by and stop him and harass him. I have had to go out... I have had to go outside and ask him, "Why are you questioning my ten year old playing baseball?" They've been told that they can't ride their Olympic scooters because they're illegal. So I had to call Cumberland's, like, police officers and ask them why, and they apologized to me. My child was embarrassed. Just the other day, he was walking home, I'm sorry, riding his bike home, and he was stopped asking where he was going because he's a black kid in a predominantly white area. So I think there's really strong issues in my neighborhood and I'm not okay with it. Because he's a good kid, he's a very good kid, he has good grades, goes to school, he plays basketball, and he plays with his friends, and that's it. So the issue that I have is why is he being racially profiled when he's not doing anything wrong? He can be out there, you know, doing things, but he's not. So that's my biggest concern, but I think for us to open up stances with the police station, the police officers, it's a very fundamental issue. And we're not violent towards them, we're trying to, like Kevin did say, help the police and the community come together as one. So why can't the police come together with the community as well as what we're trying to do? So that's one of my biggest issues that I have, I think one of my primary... Thank you.
Another question for you, I presume you've engaged the borough council, this is in the borough of Cumberland?
Uh, yeah, I live over in Beacon Hill right now.
Oh, yeah, okay, great, so you've spoken to the local officials there because they have the oversight over the local...
So I have, I have called and spoke to, with a police officer, talked to him about riding his bike or whatever. This was a few years ago. And she got information that I did contact him, and she did apologize to me, but I thought she owed my son an apology, not me, because it was my son, it was the one that was embarrassed. She did apologize to him, but since then, things have still been going on with the police station, so...
Yeah, the, the, the local police, of course, are under the jurisdiction of that municipality, so I would, I would encourage you to the extent you can to work directly with the borough council there.
Okay.
And, you know, the borough manager now is, is that, Al, Al Pensa, Al Pensa.
Okay.
And so, you know, you may need to ask to go to the borough manager because that's the person, and they have a mayor, the Cumberland mayor, that's Doug Morrow.
Well, I heard that the mayor really isn't pro on everything that's just happened with the mayor in Cumberland?
There's been a lot of rhetoric surrounding it, but I can tell you, you know, it's, it's, and I both know Mayor Morrow and we consider him a quality individual. I'm not sure I would make an opinion on him based just on what's in the, in the media and such. Unless he is the mayor, so, you know, it's, it is his job to make sure the police uphold the law and that they are accountable to him and to the public. So those local officials should be, I mean, they're, they're closest to the issue and hopefully they're responsive to the community. So I encourage you, if you, if you didn't get satisfaction with your first dealing with the borough, don't, don't just drop it there, I mean, I would continue to engage them.
Yeah, I do, because it's still obviously going on. I mean, this has been, since he was eight years old, he's sixteen now, so this is a, he has heard pain. And one question that I've been asked is, why do I live in Cumberland? And the school district is great for my son and my daughter. And that's the issue, is I've even had problems with some of the teachers and my children. You know, my son was allowed to use the restroom and he ended up using the bathroom in his pants because they wouldn't allow him to go to the bathroom. I had an issue, I spoke to the school and got that taken care of as well, but it happens inside the schools too. It's not just how it's...
I would say there's, a lot of, a lot of folks are, are learning new ways of thinking. And there are, there are, and I don't mean any disrespect to the previous borough council members, but most of them, but there are new faces on council, there's a new borough administrator, Mr. Pensa, the borough council president, and the mayor's relatively new. And I, I would fully encourage you to engage them as much as you need to, to make sure that they are holding the police accountable and ensuring the police have what they need to do their job correctly and in compliance with the law and with the principles of fairness and equality that are, that are built out of those two.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jessica, I'm, I am in New Cumberland. And I'm actually really glad you brought up the borough because we are New Cumberland Voices for Change. We are in the borough, we hold rallies and sign-holding, do talking in center of New Cumberland. And I'm actually really glad you brought up Mr. Doug Morrow. He's not a huge fan of us, he's not a fan of what we do. So when you say to go and approach him with these matters, it's hard for us to feel like we can because he's not a fan of us. He's not a fan of the fact that the old sign that says Black Lives Matter in New Cumberland. I feel as though someone who sees the issues and who wants to work on diversity in his area, I'm sorry, like us.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like as someone such, he shouldn't be making such loud statements on, I know it's social media, but on his personal social media and when he makes, when people interview him, when there's interviews and such, um, the type of reach out we get is not one that is welcoming. It's not one that we feel like we are welcome as a group in New Cumberland. It's not gonna stop us, but we're, we're definitely there and we're not doing anything as far as violent. We're just there peacefully showing that New Cumberland needs to become a more diverse area. We did get to sit down with Chief Spadacino as well, and we work with Spadacino on everything we do there. He calls us and lets us know, you know, he's a great supporter of us because he sees what we're doing. New Cumberland is not a very diverse place, there's no basketball place, there's nothing, nowhere to play basketball, we know why that is. There's nowhere to skate, kids will get pulled over, I got stopped. I was with my stepson trying to, you know, chase his RC car and I got stopped on a long road. I know that's borough issues, but also the borough likes to, tends to say where you're outside of New Cumberland, like Beacon Hill might not be considered part of the borough because it's not in the borough limits. So I'm not sure how much she can, how far she can get.
It is in the borough.
It is, okay, alright.
It's not a technical problem.
Because they try, yeah, we, we, we've had some people, you know, saying as far as New Cumberland addresses, but, um... So we do work with Spadacino and we are trying to work with Spadacino to get more, uh, different funding for him because he did mention, number one, they, they need some type of sensitivity, sensitivity training as far as, the only type of training they get are the action ones. Like, all, all the training they get is, is responding to type of violence. They don't have any type of sensitivity training, they don't get trained for autism, they don't know how to deal with people of autism or mental illness. And I know, I know for a fact, because I work in that field, that there are people in Cumberland with, uh, mental illness and autism. So they need sensitivity, sensitivity training all around, dealing with kids of, you know, people of color, kids of color, uh, mental illness and autism because they have none of that. Everything is just responding to violence instantly.
But our, our county mental health office actually does provide training to...
Well, Spadacino says they do not have any, so if they are, they're not here watching it. So we need to make sure that they are.
Let me follow up with our...
I appreciate that. So, yeah, we are working on trying to make those changes in New Cumberland and we are the ones that pull the signs on Market or Bridge, I'm sorry, Bridge, uh, the corner Bridge. We are peaceful, we are there trying to make, uh, New Cumberland more diverse because it does need more events, more community, and it does need to be more diverse. Um, it is a predominantly deviant area. Unfortunately, we get a lot of backlash when we hold our signs, so we know that it's not just, I mean, it's, it's an issue in, in the city, not just with people that run it, but the people that live in it as well. We're trying to desensitize them as well, we're trying to show them that everybody's your neighbor, we love you all. We're all welcome, we're trying to hear a lot of events and trying to get everyone to come together. But our biggest issue a lot of times is that when we post things and we're trying to get things out there, especially the people that follow us or tomorrow, they're all very hateful towards us and they do not like us just because we say Black Lives Matter. And they fail to remember that we're not saying that all lives don't matter. We're just saying right now, with the issues going on with Black Lives, we need to stand up for Black Lives at the moment. It's not that all lives don't matter, because they do. We're here to unite all lives, but we can't unite all lives when Black Lives are being killed two and a half times, more statistically speaking, than white people in general. So, you know, it's just, it's time that we start, we start making changes in our small area and hope that we can get this to spread out further. So, thank you.
I, I, I just want to make a comment, and I think this is a good comment for, for, for the public to hear. I, I follow neighbors in New Cumberland, I, I pay attention, and I saw the KKK car in the sidewalk.
Thank you, yes, the one I posted on there.
And what is, and, and so I think it's really, really important for everyone to understand that that is a direct threat to lives.
It is.
The KKK didn't show up to be nice to people, they showed up to kill people.
They did.
Right, they showed up to torment, to torture, to make people afraid. And we, there's no place for that in, in Cumberland County, there's no place for that in our communities. And I know this will take time.
It will.
I know that.
Yes, and it takes some time, yes, and you saw, I'm glad you saw it, I'm glad you follow, I'm glad you do because, you know, we're not, we're not gonna stop, we're gonna continue, so. I hope you continue to follow us, and it will always be peaceful and happy and, you know, as much happiness and peace as you can bring to the United States.
Miss, have you attended a borough council meeting yet?
I'm sorry.
Have you attended a borough?
Yes, the last one, and we plan on attending the next one. And we've attended a couple other, but most of the ones we attend, Morrow's not there. I know he's recently been sick and I'm not going to, you know, chastise him for that, that's, he's, he all understand. So we're hoping he'll be at the next one and we'll see what we can do.
I would suggest we continue to do that, there are some newer council members.
Right, I agree with that as well, so we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
My name's Tom Hall, I live right here in Carlisle. I also live in Florence Springs, Mount Holly, in Kansas City, in Camp Hill, so I've kind of been all over the borough county. And with what you said to Anne, that she really needs to speak to the borough of Cumberland about the police, I personally witness abuses of power from Kansas City cops, Kansas City township cops, Mount Holly cops. I personally have not witnessed Carlisle cops abusing power, but I have plenty of people in my daily life who have. So certainly not just a New Cumberland issue, certainly not a one place issue. Like I said, I've been all over New Cumberland, I've seen it firsthand in just about every single township that we have. And, you know, like you were speaking on, you know, about what's going on in New Cumberland. Certainly not just in Cumberland, there's a lot of, you know, small accounts, Mount Holly in particular, where this type of thought is very prominent and, you know, a lot of people just accept it as a fact. And, you know, we are all here to work, to change that, you know, so like you said, peaceful and happy way we can. But we definitely need your assistance, you know, you guys are the ones who can help make decisions. And I just really want you to not just stay covered in the one spot, really understand that it is a countywide issue. You know, the police definitely need to be trained better, they need to be reformed better, there needs to be more, you know, community outreach from the police so, you know, they're not asking for some, you know, times, who are you, where you're going, they know who, it's not that hard, you know. So just little things like that, I think, your community outreach with the police and maybe pleasing them should be, you know, about supporting the community, helping the community, aiding the community, and not just about, you know, how am I even gonna say, I'm pretty upset right now? Well, you know, the, the more negative abuses of power that cops tend to get, and so we see online, but, you know, it's happening in our county, it's happening in our town. And I really want you guys to think about that and take it into account, that's all I can say, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Very, very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in today, we appreciate all your comments. I encourage you, as you say, that you want to take a cooperative, collaborative approach. I ask you to consider maybe, don't throw into town on Mayor Morrow yet, I mean, I think maybe a one-on-one outreach to him. Part of the problem that we fall into today is, is that people are separated into opposing camps and they feel they have to be in one camp or the other. And it takes a while to kind of break the focus of that, that mindset, so, um, I think, I think don't get people to talk to you, so I think I should make another attempt there, so, so, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything you have for me to...
Okay.
Okay, very good, um, that concludes all of our businesses for today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Blue to adjourn.
We are adjourned.